I'd like to convene the Price City Council meeting on August 13, 2025. I'll turn the time over to our good friend and Pastor Minister.
Andrew. You can say Pastor.
Pastor Andrew Lazlo that's been with us for a long time. Appreciate him, so I'll turn it over to Pastor.
Let's pray. Father, here we are again, asking for your blessing, asking for your help, once again. Lord, we always need it, but you said that if we seek you first and your righteousness, you said you'd add all the stuff we need for this life, you said you'd add that right to us. Father, I'm honored to be part of a community where our leaders have chosen to put you first, ask for your help every time. So here we are, Lord, trying to do what we can do. We ask you to do your part, pour out that grace, pour out that blessing. Father, I pray for those who will speak tonight, I pray for those who will hear. Lord, they're gonna try to listen to each other, and Lord, help them to listen for you, that at the end of the day, they'll have that peace that assures them they've heard from God, and they'll have that help from the Holy Spirit, so they can do your will. Thank you, Lord, for a group that wants to make our community a better place and a place that is blessed of God. Help us do that, Lord, we ask it in Jesus' name, amen. All my Lord. Thank you, God.
Okay, item one, please join with me in the pledge of allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item two, roll call, let the record show that Councilmember Richardson's excused. Item three, safety seconds for Councilmember Close.
I just wanted to remind everybody, school starts tomorrow, so a couple of things to keep in mind. One, slow down, there'll be a lot of kids out on the street. But two, as you're crossing, coming up to a crosswalk, if it is ladder or zebra stripe, please remember that you need to make sure that the people completely clear that crossing before you continue, not just clear your lane. Also, if you approach a school bus with flashing lights, you stop no matter which direction you're traveling and wait until those lights are completely off, not just when you think the kids are on or off the bus. Let's be safe out there and keep our kids safe.
Okay. Item four, a September Suicide Prevention and Awareness Month proclamation. Consideration and possible approval for Mayor Correones to proclaim September as Suicide Prevention and Awareness Month in Price City. That could possibly Suicide Prevention Liaison be the intended.
I'm here, present, accounted for. Hello, council, I'm coming to you today for the first time in my new position, which is the Suicide Prevention Liaison with Four Corners Community Behavioral Health. And even though I have switched entities, I still work under the same department, which is Suicide Prevention. This role is more youth-focused, however, it is well within my reach to reach out to our community and help spread messages of hope and get the word of Suicide Prevention out there. I realize that it's only August, but I have come to learn over my last seven years in proclaiming September Suicide Prevention and Awareness Month that it is a great opportunity for community members who have more questions or want more training to reach out to me, and so I want to fill up my September calendar with community-focused activities. And so that's why I'm coming with the proclamation today.
Oh, what a great job you do.
I know. Thank you, I appreciate that.
You're just terrific.
Thank you, thank you. So in years past, we've read it aloud, I don't know if you want to take the time to do that, and do know that you have a full agenda, so I respect not reading it, but I'm here to answer any questions you may have about it.
Questions?
I just echo May's statements.
You have to say that, Megan. No, just kidding.
She was tremendous in this role.
Thank you.
Can the public ask a question?
Sure.
Are there any events going on in September?
I am so glad that you asked, Megan, thank you, I'm more than happy to share that knowledge. So we have a couple of events, I'm gonna turn my back only because, okay. We have a couple of events planned on the docket for September, starting with World Suicide Prevention Day that takes place on September 10th every year. If the council will approve the usage of the Price Peace Gardens this evening, that's also on the agenda, we will be there from 7:00 to 8:30 in the evening. Four Corners Community Behavioral Health with the Hope Squad of Carbon and Emery County will be providing battery-operated candles, and it's just an opportunity for survivors of suicide loss to come together and speak their loved one's name and exchange pleasantries and camaraderie with each other. This is not an easy life to live, being a survivor of suicide loss, and so a lot of times, our survivors feel that they're not able to speak their loved one's name or talk about how they lived, because the focus is so much on how they passed. And so World Suicide Prevention Day is an opportunity for them to gather in the park with like-minded individuals and just be embraced with love and hope and compassion. And then following that, we will have our annual Hope Walk. This will be the 13th time that we have put on a Hope Walk in our area. This year, we are again partnering with the American Foundation for Suicide Prevention, and we will start that at 9:30 on the 13th at Price Peace Gardens, with the program beginning at 10:00 AM, and that will go all the way till 12:00. We have a plethora of our community partners that are coming to table to give out resources to the community. We have Emmett the Eagle, he's always a fan favorite, he will come out with the drum line, hopefully, the athletics department wasn't sure when, we talked about, but... And then we also have people that will be donating their services, like Callie Kretschlow is donating face painting, and we have sponsorships that have come in that just further our efforts in suicide prevention. You know, we often lead the state in suicides per capita, and yet we still don't receive a whole lot of funding for suicide prevention, and so we have to get creative. And in partnering with the American Foundation for Suicide Prevention, that opens up the lines of funding to come through by way of swag and educational activities, as well as this walk. And then in November, we'll have International Survivors of Suicide Loss Day that takes place Saturday before Thanksgiving, so it's just a great partnership to have. Other activities are to be determined. I usually have a community QPR that's scheduled, that's our hour-and-a-half-long suicide prevention training, where we talk about the common warning signs of suicide, how to safely question somebody's suicidal intent, persuade them to live and to get help, and then to who and when to refer them to resources, both locally and statewide.
Is there any question?
Any other questions from the theme of Galileo? Kidding, totally kidding.
I got one for this. Have you thought about getting with Principal Hardy about maybe having something?
Yeah, so the Carbon County School District, we go about working with the students in a different way. We do that through our youth coalitions. Through Four Corners, we have the Care Coalition, we have the Green River Prevention Coalition, and also in Emery County, we have the One Direction Youth Coalition, Prevention Coalition, and then we have the Grand Coalition, or the Great Coalition in Grand County. And so we do our suicide prevention messaging through them, because the school district is a little apprehensive still to talk about suicide and suicide prevention in the schools, so we do it through mental health and through the youth coalitions, but thank you for that, yes.
So, you know, we have a city youth council also.
Yes, you do.
And you need to reach out to them, or would you like to come to one of our youth?
I would love to, absolutely.
We're meeting every Monday at 6:00.
Perfect. Could I borrow your pens, sir? I brought pens for everybody, but didn't bring one for myself. So the first Monday?
Every Monday.
Oh, every Monday.
At 6:00, here in this building. Twenty-one students.
I'm there. I would be more than happy to come and address them about mental health and self-care and suicide prevention.
Good.
Thank you for that invitation.
Yeah.
Okay, awesome.
Okay, any other questions from council?
We're just really glad you're part of this community, you're such an asset.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Get yourself a fun beer, Andy.
Well, you just keep spreading that rumor.
A motion to authorize a proclamation.
I'm going to be approving Mayor Correones to proclaim September as Suicide Prevention and Awareness Month.
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second, a motion from Councilmember Chris Nash.
He's been gone too much.
One day, no work. And a second from Councilmember Willis, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, thank you.
Thank you. I'll be back in a few minutes.
Okay, item B, 4B, 2025 International Days update. I'll turn the time over to Megan Marshall. Do a presentation, and it looks like we're gonna use the TV for this presentation.
Netflix.
So everybody wanna watch?
Got popcorn. Ha ha, technology, wonderful.
Want that light?
Sure.
Wonderful. So I'm Megan Marshall, I'm the Price City Event Coordinator, and coordinated the 2025 International Days Festival. And when I say coordinated, I mean I sat while a lot of other people did the work, but it takes a lot to make this happen, so I'm here tonight to give a presentation, brief summary of how the festival went. We had survey input from the community, survey input from the vendors, and just a lot of thanks all the way around. So just as a reminder, what International Days is all about, this was our 41st International Days in this community, and as a reminder of why it got started, is to celebrate and recognize the diverse cultures that founded this area. And the history of Price City and Carbon County go far, far, far beyond, and it's really important to remember our roots, and that's what this festival was founded for. And I'm hoping that the community has noticed in the last few years, we've really tried to focus on that more, bringing back a lot more diverse entertainment, diverse food choices, vendors, celebrating different countries, different ethnicities, and really making it an International Days Festival. Our opening ceremonies was a lot of fun, we had some amazing entertainment. We were able to give out the awardees this year, which is the Junior Grand Marshal, Citizen of the Year, and Grand Marshal. This year, we even had an honorary Citizen of the Year as well, and that is opened up to the community to submit their nominations for those awardees. And then it's a very difficult task for the committee to sit and go through all of the nominations and reasons for the nominations, it was a very difficult choice, but yes, sir.
Can I make a comment on that? By opening that up to the public, we get nomination for people that I don't think we would normally think about. And it's really brought a different group, a great group, to what we do.
Exactly, a lot of unsung heroes that we get nominated.
That's what I meant to say.
And I was thrilled to see the introduction or reintroduction of the Price City Prowler mascot we had there.
Very cool.
Our mystery prowler, who really took to the role, and had a lot of wonderful engagement with kids. I've seen so many people change their social media Facebook profiles to pictures that they took with their prowler. It was absolutely fantastic, so you'll be seeing a lot more of him. We had a slew of activities, between the carnival, pool parties, tournaments, costume contests, free swim day at the park, the golf tournament. All of these were very well attended, lots of incredible feedback, the car show with the grand parade. Selfishly speaking, I love the grand parade. We did implement a few new activities this year as well. We had a costume contest during the movies at the park, and brought more sound there, so a lot more engaging activities for that, for those events, too. The entertainment was incredible, I've just heard positive comment after positive comment about the diverse entertainers that we had. You know, it's one of those things where most of the time, you get some that like some of it and others that like some of it, but the entire show was phenomenal. We had a lot of local entertainers and demonstrations, as well as a lot of entertainers from outside the community that we hadn't heard before, so it was very exciting. Safety is, of course, always our main concern, and there's a lot of entities that go into making it safe, and we are incredibly appreciative. We had increased Price City police presence there, the health department keeps everyone safe, the sheriff's office, even campus security helps out, ambulance, Carbon Medical provided a first aid station, super important. And so just want to express our genuine gratitude for all of those departments. So in reaching out to the community, we want to see how are we doing? Where can we improve? What can we do better? Or are we just fantastic? So we asked on a scale of one to five, how did they feel about the entertainment? We got a solid 3.87, I like it, I like it. Vendor booth selection, 3.59. How costly did they feel like the entire festival was? Of course, you know it's no charge to attend, but we do have food vendors and merchandise vendors that count on us. 3.44, so that's not bad at all. Likelihood to return in 2026 as an attendee, they said a solid five, love that. The food selection was a four, the family activities, which were definitely increased this year, in case you hadn't noticed that, the carnival brought a lot of activities for the little kids, and so we loved seeing that. Park cleanliness and accessibility, huge shout out to the parks department, they work hard to not only get it ready for the festival, but then the aftermath of the festival, like keeping it clean the entire time. And then the overall rating is a solid 4.22, so we love those numbers. We also wanted to know the attendance, we teamed up with Carbon County Tourism Department, and they're able to pull attendance numbers from specific events in specific areas, different timelines. It's a really thick creepy report, but it gives us a lot of really good information. Selfishly speaking, I wanted to see how many people attended my parade, so that top figure shows that we had 8,000 people between 700 East and 100 West during the parade.
Eight thousand?
Eight thousand.
Hand it out.
Never enough candy.
Never enough candy. And then we wanted to see the park festival attendance as well. Overall, for the entire weekend, we had over 30,000 people, between Washington, Washington Park, Pioneer Park, the Horseshoe Pits, that whole area. And seeing the attendance between Thursday night during opening ceremonies, Friday, and Saturday. Love those numbers. And those are unique visits, and doesn't count children without cell phones. So that number's probably a lot higher for all the kids. We wanted to know who was attending the festival. So 65% were unique visitors, and 35% were repeat visits during the entire... So they had left and then they came back, we love seeing that. And then the locations of them, 70% of our attendees were from Price Carbon County. And then we did 10% out of state and 20% nearby counties. So we did Carbon and Emery, I apologize, Carbon and Emery County for 70%, and anything outside was the 20. And then Parade Day Two, I wanted to see that, too. So 65% were local, 25% were nearby, and 10 were from out of state, so neat numbers. Overall, we had 34 food vendors, that's not vendor spots, we had 99 vendor spots in the park, and so that's the most we've ever had. Shiloh and Stephen do an amazing job of laying out that park, that is not easy, and running all the power to it. So 99 spots, and we had 34 unique food vendors and 65 merchandise vendors. We also wanted to get their input, so 90% said that they would like to return for 2026. 72% thought that the booth fees were fair compared to other festivals that they'd attended, and we had a 98% overall satisfaction from the vendors, so yeah. Of course, festivals like this cannot happen without our sponsors and our partners. Sponsors who are cutting checks, of course, we love them. But there are a lot of businesses and additional entities that partner with us, let us use their power, let us use their space, donate swag, donate employees, whatever the case may be, we could probably make pages and pages for them, but they are awesome for helping us out with this. And then, of course, we just recently proposed the dates for next year, and it was approved by the committee this week that 2026 International Days will be August 5th through the 8th. We're very excited about that. And that's it for me, any questions about it in International Days?
Megan.
Did a great job, it's so fun. I encourage everyone to ride the zipper.
I will watch you.
I don't know why you're always the oldest one in line. Let's run this open.
No, Megan, I think, you know, what you did from this presentation, the community needs to see it. How do we share it? Sid, can we put it on our webpage, put a link there, so that people will see it? I think it speaks a lot in why we do what we do.
Thanks, I would spend a little more time on it.
We did just publish a huge article about it with all of the numbers.
Thank you so much.
Because I thought it was phenomenal how many people had come out.
Okay, can I make a comment?
Sure.
The one thing I would like to see added is, because I've seen a lot of people who think the golf tournament is a waste of people's time and takes away from International Days. It needs to be told that the golf tournament donated over probably $7,500 to local charities, the shit that we raised. So I think people need to understand that the golf tournament is something that works well with International Days.
I would second that, I have also heard comments that what is the point of the golf tournament? And I don't think people, I think a lot of people think it's a drain of money, but they don't understand how much it brings in, so I think that would be a great add to whatever graph you can do.
Over the years of the tournament, just under $70,000 has been donated to charities on behalf of the city.
And I think people need to know that.
Otherwise, would have just not happened or come from other ones.
And that's kudos, you know, to Tender Richardson that's not here for International Days. You know, Tender, Lane, you know, worked a lot, and also you, Megan, but also Nick with the golf tournament. I think that those people behind the scenes organizing, getting this all so that it runs flawlessly, and I know you were pretty tired those days. Running around, so we appreciate that you're doing that.
And we appreciate that a city council member is rotating, that a city council member is always willing to sit as chairperson for the planning committee for this, it's a take a lot.
So mysterious, yeah.
Was that golf complaint from the team that finished last, or something?
But I think we talk a lot about International Days, but there's not a lot of data that's put out for the golf tournament, so I think that would be a great...
I hope we could get those numbers added in there when we put them in.
We're gonna call them over. Okay. Thank you very much. Okay, item four, Sid, Nick, can you turn the lights? Thank you, Nick. Preferred alternative for Upper Price River Watershed Environmental Impact Statement. Consideration and possible approval of Super Wash Reservoir Alternative A, including pressurized irrigation system and the in-stream flow as the city's preferred alternative for the Upper Price River Watershed, EIS. Council have any questions about it? I'd like to say a little bit, I mean, we've been, for many years, four years, we've been working with it in this EIS project, and it's, we went from 26 different sites. For, you know, we listened to the community on where we were gonna build this reservoir. We looked at 26 different sites, and we narrowed it down to four sites. And then, from those four sites, we picked A, and A is right, there's Intermountain Electronics that has bought the Lee property, and right above it is where the reservoir will go. And this is not something easy, not kind of, we, as a council, last city council meeting, we passed $200,000, $215,000 to complete this EIS, because what happened was, we were in the middle of the EIS, and we, as a council, approved an extension to finish the EIS at the cost of $900,000. We went, met with the engineering company, and they went from $900,000 down to $200,000, $215,000. Then the other part was the city, you know, we only have so much, and we met with commissioners, and Commissioner Haddock and Jensen, said we believe in this project, and so the county and the city have put that money together. Commissioner, do you want to speak to this, or do you want to say?
No, I think you explained it very well.
So with this EIS will be finished, you know, we'll finish the project, then we go on to design, and hopefully, you know, with the government cutbacks, and this is huge, you know, these government cutbacks, we're seeing the dollars saved, but the bottom line is, you know, I've always said, for every one power plant employee, there's seven outside that power plant that sustain that power plant. Same thing with this project, this project, for the government, the NRCS that has been helping us with this project, with the funding getting cut, and the employees are really, we had like five employees from the NRCS that were down to two, and they're shaking in their boots. You know, but how many people is this reservoir gonna impact if it doesn't go through with the funding? You know, the next part of the design is close to $2, $3 million to design. And then the next is to the construction.
Just one comment, Mayor, the reason this is so important is because water is quite literally the lifeblood of not just Price, but Carbon County.
Exactly.
We're in a desert, we're not getting any more water, and there's a lot of issues with the Colorado impact that could come and affect us, that can take what water we currently have because of the deficits that are happening in the downstream. So if we're not being proactive, that's how I feel personally, if we're not being proactive in the water, in our water use and the reservoir, to be able to conserve our water for more desert and dry times, I think we're putting our own people at risk, and many of the people, many of the industries that are interested in coming here aren't coming here based if we have that water availability.
Well put, because we have a neighbor to the south of us that is a good example of their stewardship of water. They have done a very good job of it, and that's the model that we're talking about, too, for Carbon County. So with that being said, is there any other comments?
One of the benefits to the preferred alternative that we're looking at versus the one in Garland that was originally looked at is that there is more potential for recreation opportunities there, which can enrich our community as well, bring in people from out of the area for recreation purposes, which will hopefully increase people coming in and spending, staying the night, staying a little bit longer. And so that's a great advantage of this preferred alternative that has been looked at.
And 75% of the project will be funded under the agricultural umbrella. 25% will be where, you know, the county and cities, irrigation companies will come up, and that's where we, as elected officials, will have to do our work. And, you know, we hate Senator Curtis, Congressman Kennedy have been in those conversations, and they see the importance of it, so those are the things that is, it's exciting for our community. So, okay, any other comments?
With that, I would move that we do the preferred alternative for the Upper Price River Watershed Environmental Impact.
With that, I would move that we do the preferred alternative for the upper Price River watershed environmental impact statement.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion from Councilmember Willis and a second from Councilmember Jesperson. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, item D, Joint Highway Committee Project Change of Scope Request. Consideration and possible approval of a request to thirty-three thousand four hundred and nine dollars, twenty-four percent. Any comments?
Do you know what that scope of work includes?
As we do.
Like we're replacing the entire, the culvert, the road, the bridges, the crossings.
Yeah, so, you know, from that engineering study, basically, we we were first concentrating on six hundred east. And then we moved, and and we thought six hundred east over there by Pinnacle School was the the worst one. And from the study, they said, you know, three hundred east and Carbon Avenue. And then they said, if if we had our priorities, Carbon Avenue is the priority. Okay, the Chair will ask for a motion.
I move we approve the Joint Highway Committee Project Change of Scope Request.
Okay, I have a motion from Councilmember Miller.
Second.
And a second from Councilmember Chrisman. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, consent agenda items. Do we need to talk about any of those items?
Herein then, Mayor, I move we approve consent agenda items A through L.
Okay, I have a motion from Councilmember Miller and a second from Councilmember Willis. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item six, public comment. I've just opened it up to the public. You'll have a two-minute time to come to the podium, state your name, and you can say your comments. Thanks.
Dave Cox, I just have a question. We're talking about water rights. So we're talking about how if we have a reservoir, you know, there's only so many water shares available. So by having a reservoir, does that mean that, kind of like possessions and intents of the law? In other words, we have it, we control it? Is that is that the the idea?
And I'll make a comment to that. I know the public comment we're not to, but to this because passionately involved with this. So Price City owns five thousand acre feet of water. And so we can store that five thousand acre feet. This reservoir is going to be a seventy-five hundred acre foot reservoir. With that being said, the other irrigation companies will, you know, partner and put their water. That's that's the question we've been asking. Who's going to put the water behind that dam? And and that's where Price Wellington, we've signed, we're we're in the middle of signing an MOU with Price Wellington. And they're all in, and we'll work on that. So we'll store our water, but then these thirty thousand dollars, lease thirty thousand dollars leasing our water to Trout's Unlimited. We make lots of money so that we can fund a project like this, fund a project like this. So I hope I answered that question.
Yeah, in other words, it's it's we're retaining the water so it's not wasted or lost.
The water in that, though, will be agricultural water, not culinary water. And then that will free up more of the culinary water for use of for development.
First. Yeah. First. Yeah.
Jared Haddock, I come today as a citizen of Price City. And I just wanted to make a public comment of how grateful I am for each of you, the mayor and the city council, and for all the work that you do. I would, I know it's not an easy job, and I don't envy you in many times. But I also know that you're not also not paid for the amount of time you put in. Probably minimum wage, less, I would assume. And for that, I I just think it's important that we recognize your service. Because I believe if you were paid what you're worth or what the amount of time you're doing it, a fair share, you could call it maybe Public Works, but you couldn't call it public service. And it's that it's that service part that I I really want to thank you for. And I want to thank all of our, all the people who are running for offices, knowing what they're giving in to.
I don't think they know.
I won't tell them, I won't tell them the amount, but I'm just I'm just grateful for that. And and I'm also grateful for your your police force and everything, everybody who works for Price City, who is not paid what they should be, and yet they choose to come and protect and show up to to work every day and because of their love of our city. And I just I just think that needs to be recognized.
Yeah, well, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So my name's Kent Huff. I live at three eighteen East, one hundred South. You come. There was a striping company yesterday that came by and did the lines on the roads. And none of the citizens along First South was notified about this. But when they came by, there was some spray that ended up on my wheels and tires. So I stopped one of the guys that was following the spraying company, and I said, hey, are you guys going to come by and wipe off our rims and tires? And he says, I gotta get ahold of my boss. Next thing I know, they're parked out in front of my house. One of the supervisors come up, and I'm talking to him about it, and he says, well, it just really just comes right off. And I says, but why should I as a citizen? You guys are a company. You did this, not me. Why don't you guys clean this up? Well, then another employee off the painting crew came down, and there was a confrontation. At that point, I was like, okay, so I called nine one one. I had four officers at my house, and this guy was going off. And I said, you know, sir, by the time you got done yelling at me, you're we're discussing this, you guys could have cleaned all this up. But I was just curious why none of us was notified that they were coming. If that would have been the case, I would have had my truck on the parkway or at least all the way into my driveway. Then the second question is, about a year and two years ago, that road was resurfaced, and they resealed it. The company, I think, was out of Roosevelt that came down and resurfaced it. Well, they did a lousy job, and nobody cleaned up after them. And now there's pea gravel in our curb and gutters that are solid rock now because the way that they sealed it and stuff, they never cleaned it up. Well, if you go up to the intersection on First South and Carbon Avenue where you can cross, and they've got the bubble things for blind people, there is so much gravel that's between that and the road, and I mean, you're going to have to chisel it off. So is that up to us as a homeowner to clean out them? I called down at the domes, and I can't remember, this was last year, and I complained, but I had nobody follow up on this. And that's just out in front of my house. And they resurfaced a lot of roads down by First South.
What's your address?
Three eighteen East. I'm right across from Bill's Home Furniture.
Yes, I'll I'll let Justin order those. I'll call him first.
All right, perfect. Thank you, guys, for your time. Have a good evening.
Okay. I'll I'll be real fast. I said my piece in the workshop. Everybody here, my name is Wayne Jackson, five Queen Rose Avenue in Cleveland. I bought a house two years ago. Two years ago, Mayor, I didn't come here. But I don't know if anybody knows what's going on in Helper this weekend, the festival. And okay, and Carbon High School has a football game Friday night, seven o'clock.
Going.
I'll be there. I just thought I'd let everybody know.
Adrian's probably announcing.
I am.
Oh, okay. Just look for a guy with a black tie.
I'm gonna sit at the game and listen to you.
Any other comment, some other comments?
Andrew and Dwight, basically, this year, this year, here this weekend as well. We'll be busy in our community.
Okay. The Chair will ask for a motion, or wait, item seven, we're gonna finish business. Chair will ask for a motion. I have a motion from Councilmember Chrisman.
Second.
A second from Councilmember Willis. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion.
Jesperson.
Jesperson, did I say Willis? No, sorry. Councilmember Jesperson. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Me and the juror, five forty-four.